Here.
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 Excellent. Okay, can you all?
Just double check and you can see Andrew's face on your nice computer. Okay, just for validation.
Yeah, yeah. Nobody's threatening him.
No.
Please join me in pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Okay, first, the agenda approval. I need a motion and a second to amend the agenda. We have a couple of language discussions that we need to, or language we may make some changes under new business. One would be to nominate Matt St. John to the Architectural Review Board and generously to the Board of Adjustment. And also reword the three conflicting parking ordinances regarding commercial vehicles. So, we can discuss that further when we get there, but if I could have a motion and a second to do that, please?
So, are we adding parking discussion?
Um, yes, essentially.
So, item D for?
That will be to, um...
Discuss the conflicting parking?
Yes.
Is, uh, that's where we're going?
Correct.
Sorry.
Ninety?
Thank you, Michelle. I forgot to type that on.
I'll make a motion to accept the additions to the agenda.
Thank you. Second?
I was looking at...
Ayes, nays?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. The agenda will be amended accordingly. Okay, is there a motion and a second to discuss vote, waive the minutes as posted? Hello? Does that all jump up here? Do you wish to read the minutes or?
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes.
Thank you. Any second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Anora. All in favor? Aye, nay?
Aye.
No nays? Thank you. The minutes are accepted as posted. Okay, remarks, petitions, and complaints. Is there anyone here who would like to speak? Gentlemen, either one of you?
I can.
Care to introduce yourself?
I'm Matt St. John.
Excuse me, Matt, just one second. Where should Matt stand in order to be recorded? Matt, where would Matt?
Where you want me at, uh, to be recorded?
Yes.
I told you, uh, up there or where you want me?
Certainly audio.
Oh, audio ones, yeah, and you.
What, Michelle?
I guess if he comes right up here.
Whatever you, whatever you need.
Perfect. Thanks, Matt.
No problem. Hi, guys. I'm Matt St. John. Sue asked me, she said you guys had some open seats. I've lived in Clarkson Valley since fifteen, I'm a kid since then, Rockwood, and Mizzou, and Umsul. I've got four daughters, been married for about twenty-five years. I'm meeting a new not-too-far-away neighbor in Forest Hills here tonight. I am a, I own a couple of construction companies that do civil construction, that do vertical, design-build work, residential. I have multiple rental properties, pretty vast knowledge of both vertical integrated model construction as well as civil. Been doing it since ninety-nine. So, Sue thought that my background would be a value add to the city. And, you know, from a, from making some adjustments as needed, you know, it's a pretty developed area already. So, most of the things that we run into can be a little bit odd, or, you know, if there's new development that's, that's needed. There's, you know, so few, few pieces here, never very little. But I got a pretty good understanding that would bring a contractor and developer perspective into government, which, you know, is always good to have, you know, voice to do that. So, I told her I'd be glad to help while I could, and if you guys got any questions, I'm glad to answer.
Thank you, Matt. And yes, Matt was, I ran into Matt when I understood he was in the construction business. We first started talking about the office remodel project. I contacted him and he was a wealth of very generous information and very helpful, and he said he was interested in participating in the government. So, when Callie left and Kim Krossman resigned, I thought, well, there you go. It was a perfect opportunity.
Yeah, I figured it's, it's, you know, help the community out for a while, you know? Get my get-to-heaven point, so to speak, for helping those.
There you go.
Same thing, you should try to help where you can. If I could be of service, then I'd be glad to. And, you know, and I'll try to be available at all the, whatever times there are. She gives us plenty of notice.
Can't make them all, but thank you very much.
Any questions, be glad to answer.
Okay, we'll, we'll get to more of that perhaps at night. Thanks, Matt. Did you want to say anything, please?
Yeah, sure.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Espy. I live in Forest Hills on Seven Oaks Drive, and I'm a new trustee with the Forest Hills Club Estates. And I just came tonight to voice my support in the score of the HOA for the proposed ordinance around driveway poster, driveway pillars. I don't know if we are planning on getting into that now, or you want me to save that?
Well, we'll, we'll address it when we get a little further down, but, yeah, you're here to do that. So, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, reports. Chris, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The law enforcement report for the month of September is as follows. We had a hundred and ninety-eight radio itself initiated assignments for the officers. We had eight incidents that required police reports. We had eighteen burglar alarms, all of which were false alarms. We had two open doors that were found by officers during the overnight hours. One was at the club. And the other one was at twenty-nine ninety-seven Clarkson Road. Neither one of those, there was no detection of any criminal activity at either one of those. They just left the doors unlocked. I don't know if I mentioned it, but we had the open doors, open garage doors, were sixteen. So, they're staying relatively constant. We continue, for those of you that don't know what that is, we midnight watch officers drive around and check for open garage doors, which is, you know, burglary is an opportunity crime, and if we leave our garage doors open, then people are gonna get hit. So, we leave little reminders for folks in their mailboxes to close and lock those garage doors. We had five accidents. It's clear that school's back in session because they got more at schools. We had a two-vehicle collision at Marquette. None of, none of these had any injuries, by the way. We had two vehicles that collided on the Crestview middle school lot. We had a motorcyclist that laid his bike down on Clarkson at Kennington. He was riding with several other motorcycle cyclists and thought he was gonna hit one of them, but laid his bike down. But he professed that he was not injured, so that was classified as a non-injury accident. We had another vehicle that sign swiped an empty bus on a lot of Marquette. And we had a two-car collision on the Marquette lot at another date in time. So, again, all these were very minor and there was no injuries. But it's just a matter of congestion that's causing this and speed too fast for conditions. We had twenty-seven moving violations that were issued by the officers. We had nine non-moving violations and sixty-six warnings for a total of a hundred and two traffic enforcements. We had several arrests this month. We had three misdemeanors, one felony and one fugitive arrest. A fugitive arrest, by the way, is when another agency has put out a warrant or wanted for someone and they're taken into custody for that agency. I'll be commenting on these as we go through here. We had a fraud on Curbs Point where the resident had their accounts hacked, and there was a considerable sum of money that was lost there, and our detective bureau is working on it right now. And a crisis intervention up on Curbsville where we responded and conveyed the resident to the hospital for further treatment. We had an arrest that resulted, as a result of a traffic stop at Curbsville and Curbs Point. Two vehicle occupants were minors and they were in possession of alcohol. So, they were taken into custody and actually had their parents come to the scene. We had another arrest that was a result of a traffic violation on Clarkson at Trowbridge. This was for driving without a driver's license. When the officer stopped him, he has never had a driver's license, as far as we know, so. Clarkson Valley, in Chesterfield, officers attempted to make a felony warrant arrest, and they were able to locate the subject. And when they took him into custody, he was, it was for drugs in the first place, felony drugs. And when they got him, he had felony drugs. It was, again, so he was taken into custody and conveyed to the station. And then we had those two open doors that I mentioned earlier. That's November.
Busy.
Yeah, it was. Any questions?
How was your trip?
Excellent, excellent. Yeah, we were in the eastern Caribbean, and luckily not the western, because it was a little busy over there, but it was very nice. We're at St. John, St. John's, a couple other places. Just pristine, beautiful water, you know?
Officer Conley was out last week on a cruise, so.
If you're looking for someplace to go, St. John, there's Trump Beach there. It is beautiful. Nobody's there, and it's the most pristine beach you've ever seen. Beautiful, diamond water.
My daughter was just there on a business trip with Merit, and she said the same thing. She says spectacular.
Now, what other question for you, Lieutenant? Any update on that fatal accident from a few weeks back? Is that still ongoing?
Uh, when I asked about that in the last week, I was told that we're still waiting for ME results to come back in. Takes a while.
Was there accident reconstruction?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And for those that don't know the difference, that when we do, in almost every case of a serious injury or an injury accident, we do write a police report, and those police reports are a couple pages. When we do an accident reconstruction, we have people that are certified accident reconstructions. It takes them a long time to get certified to do that. But when those are done, they're volumes like this. I mean, there's every, every angle of, and every consideration is taken into consideration to make a determination as to how fast they were going, which way they're going, I mean, to nth degree. It's just a very detailed report. So, yes, we did have the accident reconstruction team on the air.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, my turn. Court revenue, four thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-seven cents. Our revenue of, on our investment for the month was seventy-six thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and fourteen cents. I attended the municipal league conference last week in Branson, and it was a wealth of information. I went to several seminars that were just full of all kinds of good stuff. We have received costs and bids from four vendors each, electrical and contracting for the office project. And that is something that we'll review when we have an entire board. We'll probably do a closed meeting because it is in our best interest to get that taken care of as soon as possible, one way or the other. We got all our tax info that was received at the last minute. And I thank you all for being so flexible in your time and being able to gather and approve that because it, it comes through, we have to post fifteen days. It never comes through till the last minute. I heard from more people at the conference, they were all complaining about the same thing. So, that is done. There will be a Board of Adjustment meeting, but we don't have a date yet. Michelle's working on that. She contacted, what, six, seven people, and of those, only one was available. So, we're trying.
I was just going for one date.
Yeah, we're trying, so. Okay, I need a status report. I'll start with you, Anora.
I don't have any.
Okay, Brad?
Nothing other than we've got a new technician here from Absolute, Kasani, is doing the meeting work for us today. And we've got a new slightly different setup to some of the hardware. And I'm excited to see kind of what we come out with and getting this meeting uploaded.
Well, that's a big deal.
Shortly.
And welcome, Kasani. I know we've met once before, but I'm glad you could be here.
Hopefully, the next day or so, I'll be able to get it uploaded to YouTube.
Okay.
With various things.
Oh, oh, I'm so sorry. My alarm. Jeff?
Um, we've been, I've been working with MSD trying to find this mysterious odor. So, we think, you know, Brad actually came out and tried to help. We haven't found it yet, but we're hopefully getting there.
Do you have anything scheduled with MSD? Because I'd like to be part of that when, if you do, if possible.
I have not got that yet, scheduled yet, no.
Okay. Have you been able to get in touch with them?
I've talked to her. She was gonna send somebody out to, you know, check out that area, but not yet. Haven't seen anything more on that.
Okay, this is something we've been dealing with for the past several years. And Brad took the time to go review the site and identified areas where he feels that it is maybe a crack in the vertical sewer that, manhole that goes down. And then the lateral sewers all dump into that because the odor is that of rotting material, not necessarily human waste, but like stagnant water. But it's really problematic because it, it is so bad that people can't sit outside and enjoy their, their porches. So, Andrew, do you have anything?
I turned it all the way up. Andrew? Okay, Andrew? Can you hear us now? Speakers all the way up. Speakers all the way up. Okay, Andrew?
Uh, nothing to report. Thank you.
Yay!
That was so suspenseful.
Okay, um, city attorney report. Patrick, what do you have?
Oh, yeah, I have, um, I handed out a draft document for the pillar.
Yes.
We're not looking for approval, I think, tonight. Got delayed at this. In fact, I told Sue I barely proofread it twice, so feel free to point out there is misprint and typo and... But the main points is trying to make it something, I hear myself.
Yeah, I know.
I'm not having a stroke. Okay, good. You know, just get something in writing based on what Brad's notes were. And something that were added is, um, he said he could light up mailboxes. So, I added some language, which we can modify further, about what type of lighting, what restrictions on lighting. Trying to, if anyone has other suggestions about, you know, how many foot candles to the property line. He used words that the materials should be masonry, so we added some definition of what is ma, what is masonry? What type of chair is that? Comments about it should be complimentary to the house. So, I added a sentence in there with, "Any dispute regarding complimentary shall be referred to the city's architectural board for determination," because I think that's more appropriate than Brad or the Board, I'm sorry, the Board of Alderman, if they're gonna be interpreting architectural, you know, complimentary elements. And some other stuff I just added some language is that why these restrictions are in there is related to public safety, promoting aesthetics, common good, proper value, blah, blah, blah. Like you guys really spent a lot of time, you know, going over this for proper reasons other than, you know, including public safety on site and damage to pedestrians and cars and setback requirements. So, dice it up, add it up, get Brad's comments, and we can work on it this month.
Okay.
At least it's a good starting point.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Um, unfinished business. I guess I'd like a motion and a second to discuss the pillars and the driveway entrance monuments. Can I have a motion and a second to do so?
I'll make a motion that we discuss the pillars and driveway entrance monuments.
I'll start with that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, um, let's discuss. Patrick, you've kind of skated over it, and I'm gonna ask you where in my...
This is very, very bad.
Is it?
This is definitely very bad.
Ah.
Got it. Thank you. I'm looking for it. And to your, in your interest, Jason, this is, um, this is a project that came from Forest Hills. There were some complaints about some structures on a neighbor's yard. And it was determined that we have no criteria by which to identify what is proper and what is not. And these violated several ordinances, not the least of which was they were outside the building line. But the interest here is to establish a criteria whereby people can build these without the requirement to go before the Board of Adjustment every time they do so, which costs an additional four hundred and fifty dollars. So, um, that's what we're trying to do. So, does anybody want to make any comments on this at this time? Or you wanna take it home and?
I'll probably, I'd prefer to take it home and read it. That would be my recommendation. I guess just quick, was there any, um, did anything in here make it about neighbor or HOA approval?
I left that language in there.
You left it in, you said?
I did leave it in. I said it's, I left, because I figured you guys would let me know. That it's not requ, it's, I think the language I left in there was, is recommended but not required.
Suggested but not required.
Yeah, so I, yeah, first is suggested but not required. Because we can't require, we can't require. But it'd be nice if they come to the city, seeing it's already been approved by the HOA. Makes it a little easier to, even though we look at it independently.
Yeah, I was gonna say, as long as they meet all the other criteria, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
In that way, you know?
Doesn't matter.
That's why I was asking, because it may not.
You guys are reading it, and I just left it in there. That's how Brad left it. I was thinking, well, because it was just, is suggested period, but that's, I added a comma, but not required. And we can certainly take it out completely, because it does kind of blur the line a little bit.
Well, but I think it says suggested, and it doesn't, it obviously doesn't put us in the position where we are going to depend on their approval.
Right.
But it does suggest that they maybe make it a little easier.
Well, the ones in Forest Hills that was built, um, it was the trustees that said they had to take it down because it was in there right away.
Right.
So, yeah, they can, the city could not handle it from what we had.
Right, and that this will facilitate our ability to modify those types of structures at the savings of the HOA, because they can be more restrictive than we can, but...
Yeah, I wonder, is Brad put, can feed, I wonder if that's, is that a uniform citywide? Are, do we need, I'll talk to him about, do we need?
Setback?
The setback from the property line for different right of ways, whether we have to say, they have to verify.
Definitively.
Definitively the right of way, but that should be on the plans, or maybe as some, he can just do part of the permit process. If we had language, should I?
Yeah, I was gonna say, like, our neighborhood doesn't have right of ways in the front yards, but I know some do.
Okay.
Anora, you?
Uh, I have another question. This came up because you said we have pillars that are up already and that people are saying, well, you have pillars. Are we saying that the pillars that are there are grandfathered in?
Yes.
As of this date, and any new pillars?
Yeah.
Is that in?
That's the last sentence of the ordinance. It basically says, "Any," I forget, is that client we talked about? "Any pillars in existence in time of the passage of this ordinance shall be deemed pre-existing, non-conforming, grandfathered structure," or something like, something like that.
Pre-existing, non-conforming.
Yeah, pre-existing, non-conforming.
And non-conforming would be the critical phrase there because the pillars that precipitated this are definitely not, would not conform to whatever aesthetics or criteria we can...
But that is grandfathered prior to the passage of this ordinance, so it kind of ties it up in a little ball. But we recognize they're non-conforming, but, you know, but they're grandfathered.
The tall, the ones that started this would be grandfathered?
I don't know. Are they actually installed? I think so. They may be grandfathered, but yes, this...
But if they're not conforming to the criteria that we establish, and they don't.
Well, they're in court right now, so we're taking action against it.
Yes, we are. It's not scheduled, it's not...
It's not resolved yet.
No, it will be heard on twelve November.
Now, if we can't have, the problem, you can't say everything's grandfathered except this guy. They can't do that.
Right.
But Brad wanted this to maybe get them to conform, but I don't know how close they are to conforming.
They're not. I mean, it's...
Are they constructed already?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we can't have them move it.
Well, one, I guess one thing that would be an option is they cross the building line, right, Michelle?
Right.
They're outside the building line. They're not just pillars that are there. They're...
Yeah, I, I might say any...
They violate the building line.
If you survey the city, you're gonna find many like that. I mean...
Yeah, we can't argue that if we're gonna say everyone can do it.
Yeah, basically, that is their blank check, even though they started the whole issue. But Brad recommends, well, to stop it is get a regulation that we can enforce going forward, and we actually enforce it going forward.
Okay.
I still think we should say, anything up to this point is grandfathered in, and anything new has to go to the Board of Adjustment. I really think so.
We discussed it between the five trustees. But it seems like there's two topics here. One is, you know, does the city need to have more specifics around the ordinance than the two is relating to the specific home area you're referring to? None of us had this on our radar, you know, driveway pillars is not something that we've been thinking of in Forest Hills. But once we understood the situation and heard that there's no specific ordinances in place that would give people guidelines on what they can and can't do, we understand the reason behind wanting to provide specific specifications. We don't necessarily have the specific...
Yes, as you're referring to, yes. Everyone who did this would be subject to freshman, within a one-year statute of limitation.
So, no one is really complaining about that, those pillars?
In show, okay, we never did anything before to these other people. It's the same situation. Well, cool. Mean for shooting them.
I'm sorry. Uh, I'm sorry, it was a sidebar decision.
Anyway, but yeah, so you're correct. And we just, so, you know, there is not a ordinance that specifically regulates, but we have ordinance that prohibits it completely. But there's too many examples around the city. I mean, you can't have a structure in the front yard beyond the building line other than a mailbox. But we really don't say a mailbox, but that's federal law. You can have a mailbox.
Yeah, we can't, we can't govern that.
But we have failed to enforce that, and now we have a hodgepodge of things in the front yard, pillars, monuments. You know, and so we're trying to get something in place to make it more cohesive.
Well, I think one of the objectives behind this, an ordinance like this, and Anora, to your point, you want everything to go for the Board of Adjustment, but that is an additional four hundred and fifty dollar cost.
I really don't like pillars. That's why I'm...
Excuse me, excuse me, allow me to finish my sentence, please?
Right, no, I wanted to say that.
Excuse me, allow me to finish my sentence, and you're more than welcome when I'm finished. But the objective was to eliminate the four hundred and fifty dollar expense because the thought is that all these folks who have put up pillars didn't wish to get a building permit, so they didn't go before the Board of Adjustment. They didn't want to spend an extra four hundred and fifty dollars. So, this would eliminate the Board of Adjustment fee, and hopefully it would encourage people to get a building permit, which would then allow our building inspector to check to see if the footings were proper and if these new structures were within the criteria that we established. So, Anora, did you want to add something?
I, I want to say that I like to open front yards with no buildings, no pillars, nothing, and that's why I'm against it. And so, if they have to spend four hundred and fifty dollars, they have to spend four hundred and fifty dollars. You know, I think it was the trustees or us that we didn't have someone go around checking, is anyone building a pillar? You know, that, but why should we then say, okay, they're okay, just because everyone did it when they weren't supposed to? You know, the next time someone, putting someone else, something else in the front yard.
Can I just, I, point out something that I think you would know? We, and I, but I know Michelle knows, I'm sure you do know, is, um, they go to the Board of Adjustment, pay the four hundred and fifty dollar fee. That's like, kind of like their price, their, their penalty. There would be no uniform guideline for the Board of Adjust, Board of Adjustment to follow. I mean, at least would put together some, okay, gotta use this type of material, and here are the regulations, where you can put it, what you can do, and historically... And historically, the Board of Adjustment has approved so many things that other cities would not allow, they tend to be a bit more lenient. So referring them to the Board of Adjustment to prevent them is not gonna be effective, you're just gonna be collecting four hundred and fifty dollars, of which three hundred, three twenty-five goes to the court reporter, I don't know how much goes to the court reporter. We really don't make money off the Board of Adjustment. So the, going to all the meetings, our board is too lenient. So if you want to refer them to the board to prevent them, I'm just being honest here, it's not, they're not gonna, they may turn some down if there's like eight or nine, but if there's one or two, and they look kind of halfway decent, my fear would be that they're gonna approve them. At least if you do something like this, Brad can enforce some uniformity across the city.
There's some standards.
In, in theory, and this is all hypothetical.
Yeah, and I, I personally don't think they're trying to avoid the four hundred and fifty dollar fee. I think it's honest ignorance that they're like, it's a pillar, it's, what do you mean, it's a structure, it's, you know, there is, put it up, it's bricks, you know? So I, I think it's just people just realize they can get it done in a week, over the weekend, and they just, they just do it, but they're not trying to necessarily get, get away with anything or avoid anything, that's just, some people may not be thinking about it.
And Brad put in here how wide and how, height looks like forty-eight, I mean, people go to Board of Adjustment, six feet, three feet wide with wing walls, you know?
And they could still get that approved.
Yeah.
In theory.
Unfortunately, yeah.
And the Board of Adjustment turns over.
Get tough in the Board of Adjustment.
Board of Adjustment turns over, we have new members.
It really does be a true hardship. Sometimes it is, a lot of times it's not.
I, when I first heard about this, I just curiously drove around Forest Hills just to see what I could observe, and I came across maybe half a dozen homes that had them, for the most part, I think they just kind of faded into the landscape, you don't really notice them until you're looking for them. But the fact that people have them, and there's no specific ordinance that says what they can and can't do, seems problematic to me. I'm not here to tell you how to run the city, but that seems problematic. And then, what, who shared with me that if you did create this ordinance, that made people have to spend four hundred and fifty dollars to apply for, apply for anything that reduces, you know, your occupancy costs.
Well, one thing that we did incur when we had our trustee meetings, and you will be included at the next meeting, I try to do this two, three times a year, where we get all the HOA trustees together and see what input everybody has, what concerns everyone has, and Anora posed the question, you know, does, how does everyone feel about these? And there was really no opposition, they, you know, they're fine, okay? So that's kind of part of the play in, again, with permits, you know, and that's something I can address in the Stroll article, you know, this is a new feature, if you're gonna do this, please keep in mind any exterior, whatever, consult your HOA and the city, so. Anyway.
Yeah, like I guess you, it says you could, where's on drafts, says you can eliminate these things, but also we can place limitations on how much and type and shielding, where I don't think the Board of Adjustment could get that deep down into it, because they're, I don't know.
H O A's can do all this themselves.
Right.
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 They can be, H O A's can be more restrictive. But they can't be less.
Do you want to just take this home and read it and come back?
That's what I recommend.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely. Okay, new business. We come now to approving the recommendation for the Architectural Review and Board of Adjustment to replace Tally and Kim Cosman with Matt St. John. So do I hear a motion in a second to discuss and vote on adding Matt to those two committees? Or two boards?
I make a motion that we add Matt to the two boards, Architectural Review and Board of Adjustment.
Thank you, second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Matt, welcome to the, welcome to the circus. So, thank you, motion passes, Matt is the newest member, thank you very much. Okay, I know Andrew unfortunately is not here, but he approached Patrick, I guess, a week or so ago, expressing an interest in contracting with an HR service to help us draft employee policies, of which we have currently none. We've never had an employee policy.
Does Andrew want to?
And if Andrew wishes to contribute, that would be great, but I think at this point we need a motion in a second to discuss, is that correct?
Yes.
So, a motion?
I make a motion, we discuss the prospect of contracting an HR firm for the policies.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Any nays? Anora, you?
I'm, I'm wanting to hear what they, why they want it, so I'm not gonna say nay, we aren't gonna discuss it, but whatever.
Well, yeah, a motion and a second, so we can discuss it. We're not proving anything, we can discuss.
I was just asking if she wanted to.
I don't think we need it either, but that's beside the point, so.
Okay, Andrew, would you care to contribute as much as you can?
Can you hear me? Andrew, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks, hi, everyone. So, going back a little while, we have been conversing for quite some time about the city's personnel policies, HR issues, et cetera, and, you know, I just expressed to Patrick, and I wasn't the only one, but I expressed to Patrick that, hey, you know, we all have our strengths and weaknesses, and we don't happen to have an HR professional on the board. There are some things that I think we're good at, sensitive HR issues are not one of them, and for some of the stuff we've been navigating, particularly writing up some new policies and having some things documented, and kind of recording recent history, I think it would be appropriate to have a professional involved. If you can hear me, thank you, and I'm gonna go back on mute.
And so, I, I wait till I'm muted. Okay, can I talk now? Okay, so the phone call I had was scheduled with Greg, it was Greg and Andrew, and Andrew can correct me if I'm wrong, but basically, their, their points that they expressed to me and requested to get on the agenda is, we don't know what we don't know, we're only skilled in what we're skilled in. And we discovered earlier this year some, the lack of certain policies and lack of certain HR abilities and background, and, and so they're, I guess, trying to summarize what they were requesting is that they feel the city shouldn't leave the development of new employee policies and human resource practices, and an assessment of what, what have we done, and what are we gonna do to amateurs, I guess, I mean, you know? And that perhaps it would be money well spent to pursue an outside company to assess where we've been, assess where we are, and help draft a plan to move forward for all future employees, all future aldermen, future mayors, just so we don't miss anything, or we don't get ourselves in, in trouble. I'll stop, I think that may be, I don't know, can you ask Andrew if that's a fair assessment of what I heard?
That's a fair assessment, except the amateur part.
Aye.
Thank you, Patrick.
You're welcome.
Okay, so at this point, then, I would say we probably need a motion in a second to nominate committee members to go out and discover HR firms and present that to the board for a recommendation, so they could engage in that.
No, point of order, before you form a committee of the aldermen present, you have two choices, table this to the next meeting, when you have all six of you here, to have, and especially the other alderman who was speaking in favor of it, or of those who here asked if they even want to do it, because you don't want to form a committee if, you know, the three of them here say, we don't want to do it.
Okay.
So you have two options there, but it would be, because Lynn has kind of served as, have.
As a mediator, yeah.
It'll be interesting to get his opinion, and Greg was there with, I don't know if he called Andrew, she made this one, table what?
Yeah, I, yeah.
I make a motion to table this to our next meeting.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Excellent, that will be explored next month, thank you.
Sorry to jump in, but.
No, I think it's a great idea, I think it's a great idea. Okay, one of those things that would be covered under this employee policy, of course, would be employee holidays, but this may be a little easier to consider. Right now, Michelle is entitled to thirteen paid days a year, state holidays, all the state observed holidays. If you count the holidays that most cities tend to observe, they tend to be too less. There are a couple of, I think, what is, what, Lincoln's Birthday and.
Lincoln's, Washington's, and Truman's Day.
And Truman.
Yeah.
And, and, right, and those are state holidays, and currently we, and, and I think most cities do President's Day, so they, they throw those all together, observe President's Day.
So.
Do we want to table this until we can talk to the HR committee about what makes the most sense as, for us as a city, and I don't necessarily feel like we need to decide on a new holiday schedule personally.
And that may be the best thing to do, just tie it together. Any thoughts?
The only annoying point is, kind of, we were in October, we beat to get it in November, I, I, speaking out of school here, I think the concern would be in November, December, Michelle's wanting to swap two holidays for like, you know, give up two, to get the day after Christmas, the day after Thanksgiving, the day after Christmas, or Christmas Eve, or, you know, swap, trade in two to get the two that you want.
The Friday after Thanksgiving.
We don't discuss it, we haven't decided anything tonight, I would just point in there.
I want Bud doing that, though.
Yeah, and that's.
It is something for down the road, November, we're gonna have to make a decision about the day after Thanksgiving, December, you can make a decision about Christmas.
That would require an amendment to our contract.
Technically, amend, amend your contract, but reflect that, because we gotta, you know, cross the i's, you got the i's across the t's.
I, this is something that Michelle and I talked about quite a while ago, I just think, I think previously the office was open half a day on, was it Christmas Eve?
Correct.
And, and I just think that's crazy, we, we don't have the kind of business that warrants that being open, so it was my original suggestion that we close Christmas Eve Day, Christmas Day, and I would even consider New Year's Eve Day and New Year's Day, I think those are just, who's gonna come in on New Year's Eve Day and try to get a lot of business done? I, I, historically, has anyone?
No.
And I think we could roll the phones over in the case that an emergency occurred, someone needed to get in touch with us, that'd be possible, but I just think those are, let's just call it a.
So, like, once again, I don't think you've decided anything tonight.
Okay, cool, all right, so we're gonna table that until also next.
November.
Okay, parking ordinances. A motion in a second to discuss parking ordinances, especially as it pertains to commercial vehicles.
I make a motion that we discuss the ordinances.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes, let's talk about this. Currently, we have, and again, this came about as a result of some complaints received by the office about a resident who is renting their house to four individuals who do not, who are not married, not family members, but they are in the employ of this individual, and they park their trucks in this driveway every night. We have several different ordinances that deal with this in different ways, one says you have to, a commercial vehicle has to be moved in seventy-two hours, one says it's only allowed for twenty-four hours, that, so we're looking, we're trying to consolidate all these, so they all say the same thing. So, Pat, did you, have you come up with something that?
No, I did not, I would say the middle one, but first one is under the nuisance chapter, the separate, so standalone nuisance code. The second one is the traffic code, which police officers follow, and they will write a parking ticket, they can write a parking ticket under the traffic code, you can't write a parking ticket under the nuisance code, but we can't go to Circuit Court, or Building Court, or Administrative Action, a parking violation in the traffic code, we need something in the nuisance code, and the building code is Brad's providence. Yeah, I would agree that they need to be cleaned up, but obviously, the traffic code does something different than the other two, because it does basically the signage, the square inches, two-hour limitation for seventy-two, so that's much more specific and easier to enforce, and the more narrow it is, the easier it is for you guys to enforce, because if you don't have a permit on an active job site, that, you know, easy for you guys to figure that one out. So, I guess we, see if Brad has any recommendations.
Oh, I think he, he had a preference, I think it was the, the middle one, wasn't it, Michelle? Do you remember?
Well, the one that you used, I think, was the last one, and I don't know if it's his preference or not, but that, that is the one that reads, in my opinion, very poorly, it's hard to follow all the aspects of it.
It, you said it reads poorly?
I, I think so, in my opinion.
Well, I think, let's talk to Brad and see if he can.
Yeah, because my concern is, I wouldn't want to change the traffic code to where the police get in a situation where it's too loose and they cannot write a ticket, parking ticket, you know? The other two, we can clean up and make it easier for, you know, other, you know, prosecutions or other letters, or Brad doing his job, so I don't know, I just haven't talked to Brad, it needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't know where the magical seventy-two hour rule, it's been around for decades.
Well, and that came into play with that situation where the vehicle was born as an ambulance and then.
Oh, yeah, it's been around in many cities for decades, I don't know why seventy-two hours is such a.
The one that they were complaining about is actually a trailer, it doesn't have any writing on it.
No, wait, wait, what?
The one that we sent out the nuisance letter for?
No.
Oh, okay, we sent out two, actually, so there was one in West Hampton, and one in Forest Hills.
The one in Forest Hills doesn't have any writing on it.
Right.
And it's kind of like a trailer, what it is, is they do put down oil on pavement, and that's what it is parked there. So it's kind of like a trailer, and it's not there consecutively, because they move it, they go take it to work, so that's kind of a problem, and that's one thing I think we need to look at, because we can't allow that, and it can't go by the second thing because of, it doesn't have any writing on it.
Yeah, because that's perfect, like, we've had two or three that I can remember, one, someone bought a retired ambulance, no lettering, but it clearly was a.
You could still sort of see the words on it.
It faded, yeah, but everything's been removed and faded, but their son was juicing the drive to and from school, they got a great dip, I got it for a thousand bucks from it, so.
Oh, he's using it as his dorm room.
Yeah, oh, really?
Campus, yeah.
So, then, that wouldn't move for a while, but then we can't, because we can't prove unless we do a stakeout for seventy-two hours, oh, we can't prove it doesn't move, he would love that job. Then we had the construction company, more recently, put forth. Um, but then um, we had the construction company re- more recently, put four of the workers into one of our houses and the trucks in the driveway, which would violate the traffic code because I seen the pictures. They're work trucks.
And they're clearly marked, yeah.
So, eh, we gotta do something to clean it up.
Okay, right. So, yeah, we just put it all in one basket and straightened it out because right now we got all these different versions. So, and I think to Brad's point, I think um, the police, I think Paul told them one thing and then there's another part of the code that says something else. So what are they violating? Which one? So let's make them all.
Yeah.
Straighten them out. So.
Could they be in violation of multiple sections of the code, though? In theory, I mean, I suppose they could.
In theory, yeah.
Yeah, if they're in violation of the most lenient, that means by definition, all the less restrictive ones are, or more restrictive ones are also in violation of, but maybe not all three.
Well, that sort of speaks to the, the pillar issue. Even if we said, okay, they're grandfathered in because they've been there, they're in violation because they're crossing the building lines. And that's a different issue.
Yeah.
So, anyway. Okay, so um, Pat, are you gonna talk to Brad?
Yeah, I'll talk to Brad because I'm trying to, why do we, okay, so under the building code, why are we regulating motor vehicles under the building code?
I don't know.
It's in property maintenance.
Oh, is it property maintenance code?
Yes.
Do you know where that came from, Anora, here?
He says it's under the ninety-eight building, federal national building code. It's not in our code.
Oh, it's international building code.
You won't find, find it in our code.
So it's amended to the national standard. Okay. Make property maintenance. Cause I've seen the building code, construction, why are we doing this? But, okay, like, okay. Go talk, go talk.
Yeah, he wants to be more restrictive, thinks we should go with the more restrictive one. You know, like I said, the first one, you know, we used to have a board of alderperson who had a RV. So he parked it there for three days while he was loading it up so they could go on their trip, you know, and then bring it back and unload it. So you do need it for three days there. Um, and then we had the person.
Six inches every second day. And we'd take pictures of it being moved six inches.
So he, he left it, he took, you know, he left it there for three days while he was loading it.
What's the?
But then we had the, also the problem of a person who parked their car and put a cover over it and just left it sit in the driveway, which is also not allowed. So, you know, those type of things are problems, right?
Okay. So, um, one, two, three strikeouts for resolutions. It's okay. Okay, so we're gonna table that one until you can talk to Brad. So. All right, moving right along. Motion in a second to discuss and accept the audit as posted. Anyone?
I make a motion, accept the audit.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Audit is accepted as posted. Thank you very much. Uh, miscellaneous, we have um, housing court is hopefully going to resolve at least one of these issues. Um, personal estates has a tree issue that is a very tall stump. And um, this individual has been, what, three letters, is it, Michelle? They've already gotten three letters? And have essentially declined to respond. Their first response was, oh, this will sprout out and it should take maybe a year. It has not sprouted out and it's still there. And the second letter they responded to said, well, my arborist says it could take up to five years. This thing looks like an Eskimo totem pole that hasn't quite been carved yet and it's in the middle of their front yard. It's aesthetically very unattractive. Um, my rule of thumb has always been if the appearance of something like this impacts their neighbors, then it's, that's not a good thing. So, um, anyway, this one has been referred. They received a third letter to which they have not responded either. So at this time, it's going to be referred to um Tim Englemyer, prosecuting attorney for housing court. Um, pillar structures, we have this one home that is scheduled to go to housing court on twelve November. So it would behoove us to act on this ordinance as soon as possible so we can get that in control. Cause otherwise this individual can say, well, you know, you guys have plenty of time to do something. And there's a phrase called tacit acquiescence, a legal term, which means, yeah, reasonable period of time. You knew it was in violation. You chose not to do anything about it. Therefore, it's okay to leave it as such. So it would serve us best to deal with that as quickly as possible. Um, so any other miscellaneous items? Anybody got? Nope, nope. Um, there will be no closed meeting. We will uh do that as soon as the entire board is available so we can discuss the um, construction issues for the office space. Um, motion in a second to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wow, that was a fast motion.
Zach.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion, the meeting's adjourned.